Thank you very much. While we remain standing, can we take the national prayer? Can we take the national prayer? Itu Raban. Now we are going to sing it together. Oh God of creation, guide our wicked hearts. Guide our wily dark rights. Help our youth that truth to know. In love and honesty to grow and live in just and true. Great lofty heights I'll take to build a nation where peace and justice reign. Thank you very much. Can we all be seated? Can we take on your mandate?
Hello, hello. T, K, Y.
Please, now, sorry for the interrupt. Can we take the Asiwaju anthem in a youthful way? Let's go. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate. Bola. Shetima. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate. On your mandate. On your mandate we shall stand. Thank you very much. We welcome the presidential candidate of the All Progressive Congress, distinguished senator Bola Ahmed Tinubu. We welcome the director general of the Presidential Campaign Council, His Excellency Simon Bakola Lalongse. We welcome the director, the coordinator of the Youth Directorate of the Campaign Council and the executive governor of Kogi State, the very youthful Governor Yahya Bello. Thank you, sir. Eyes, eyes, eyes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure when I mentioned Governor Yahya Bello, Governor Lalong looked again and said, "Why didn't I come early for this position in my life? I should have been in my forties when I was governor." Now Governor Yahya Bello is in his constituents. I'd like to recognize a man who redefined political rally in Nigeria, the executive governor of Kanu State, His Excellency Dr. Umaru Ganduj. I'd like to recognize in our midst the deputy governor that is guys into this venue, looking like he was born in my generation, the very youthful Chief David Edward Onodja, the deputy governor of Kogi State. I recognize the member of the Federal Executive Council who is piloting the affairs of the youth of Nigeria and have done so well in sports development, Chief Sunday Darey, the honorable minister for sports and development. You're welcome, sir. We'd like to recognize the deputy director general operations, the man who have redefined old age. Ladies and gentlemen, His Excellency, the former governor of Edo State, comrade Adams Oshomole. Osho Baba. To recognize the deputy director general administration, the very beautiful and unassuming Hadya Bala Usman Hadiza. Can we put our hands together for... Our dear women in this hall, I just introduced Hadya Hadiza Bala Usman. I am going to come back today. Can we appreciate the directors of the PCC who are here present? We have the directors of the new media directorate, Chief Femi Fanikayo Desa. You're welcome. We have the directors of the diaspora directorate. You're welcome. And all other directors here present, too numerous to mention. We also like to recognize the man who is the pilot of today's event, the man who is commanding the youth in the NWC as far as APC is concerned, Mr. Dayo Israel, the National Youth Leader of the All Progressive Congress. We'd like to recognize the presidential aspirants of the APC here present. We have the youngest aspirant on the ballot and also have the only woman on the ballot. And on this note, I'd like to especially recognize the zona youth leaders. We have the deputy National Youth Leader North and deputy National Youth Leader South. We have the zona youth leaders and all the state youth leaders here present. The city boy movement, you are not left out. We also recognize all the support groups. We recognize all the youth groups here present. On this note, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I have the singular honor to invite to the podium to welcome you all the man who have done so much for the youth of Nigeria as far as the shot of Nigeria is concerned. The man who have done so much. Sir, Your Excellency, sir, can you tell men to stop touching me? We are on live TV, so my husband doesn't divorce me after this event. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Please, can we welcome for his welcome address, His Excellency Governor Yahya Bello?
Thank you. Thank you very much, DJ. Your Excellency, the next president and commander in chief of the Armed Forces of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, come May 29th this year 2023, the year of the Lord. His Excellency Asiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu, the Jagabam of the whole universe. Your Excellency, the executive governor of Kanu State. Please permit me to go this way. There is already established protocol. I'm not too good in protocol. But let me recognize the director general of the Asiwaju Shetima Presidential Campaign Council, His Excellency Chief Simon Bakola. You're most welcome. Let me recognize the executive governor of Kanu State, Alahaji Umar Gandujek Kadimal Islam. You're most welcome. Let me recognize my own deputy governor here, Chief Edward David Onodja. Permit me to recognize all members of the Presidential Campaign Council here present. Too many to be mentioning. I can see my own brother and friend, Chief FFK. I can see the former speaker ever smiling. Here, I can see all of you. Osho Baba, my own brother and in-law. I can see our elegant, beautiful... We have something in common. Don't smile. I don't want them to know. Hadya Bala Usman. All members of the Presidential Campaign Council, my own deputy there, I can see him pastor. I can see the only female aspirant in our midst here. Here is our minister for youth and sports. Here is our youth leader, Israel Dayo. Here is all of us here. Let me recognize all the youth groups that are here today. The various leaders of the various youth groups that are here. The zona youth leaders, the state youth leaders, the directors of various youth directorates that are here and your assistants. I can see our national women leader. You're just coming in. You're most welcome. Thank you. And all of us that are here today, let me welcome all of us. And help me to sing this song very loud and clear. I want the whole of Nigerian youth to hear across the world. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate. On your mandate. On your mandate we shall stand. Once again. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate we shall stand. On your mandate. On your mandate. On your mandate we shall stand. Thank you very much. Great Nigerian youths, of the greatest Nigerian youths. I want to talk. I want to sorrow. I want to magana. Should I continue? The time has been fast spent. Your Excellency, the incoming president and your vice in absentia, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, my own job for now is very simple, to welcome our candidates, to welcome the dignitaries, to welcome all the youth leaders and groups that are here today. We have the youth mandate to deliver our candidates from top to bottom in this general election. Your Excellency, let me tell you this. Congratulations. If you recall, on that particular wonderful day at Eagle Square, I said, "Sir, when I grow up, I would like to be Asiwaju." And thank God, I am learning from the political general. And all of us are learning from the political general. Your Excellency, this election is not all about you. It's about us. It's about the younger generation. It's about our children. It's about children yet unborn. Why did I say that? Your Excellency, God has blessed you. God has blessed you with everything human being will ever need in this life. And there's no doubt that hereafter remain abound for you as well. But we need you more than you need us. The younger generations need you. Nigeria need you. We all need you. Don't trouble yourself, sir. The Nigerian youths have asked me to tell you that you have won. This election, we are going to win it landslide. Because we are determined to take the bull by the horn and take our future on our hands. We are not going to allow those that have ruined this country for 16 years to return back again. That will never happen. This election has been won from top to bottom, from the leaders to the youths to women to people living with special needs. All of us are united behind our father, our leader and our next president. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I welcome all of you once again to this town hall meeting. It is called town hall meeting, but it's turning to a town hall rally. Within the shortest time, some of you got this message just less than 24 hours ago. The hall has been filled up. The gallery has been filled up. There are a lot of outflows outside. Your Excellency, I congratulate you once again. We are here for you. We need you. You are here to rescue this country. You have done it before and you're going to do it again. A product that is good, a product that is well prepared. You don't need to advertise it again. Our leader Asiwaju, the Jagabam of the universe, is a product that have marketed himself right from when he began to fight for democracy in this country. Those of us that are that young, since June 12th of 1993, I was still in the secondary school, we knew exactly what you went through along with late MKO Abiola of Blessed Memory. And today, God kept you. God kept you for us, just like God kept President Muhammadu Buhari for us. You have been preserved for us and we know that God had made it this way, did not make mistake. So it is now let for us to do the needful by ensuring that we take the campaign from house to house, from door to door and ensure that we win. Your Excellency, every obstacle that is going to stop this victory, God will take them away way before the election time. I call on all ourselves, the younger generation, the youths, to congratulate ourselves for this wonderful man to continue to keep himself and ready to serve once again. His life is a life of service. We thank you for making yourself available. God will continue to make you stronger, sound health and long life so that you can take us to the promised land. Thank you and God bless you all. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. While Governor Yahya Dzazabelo, the very youthful governor, was giving his welcome address, we had join us the very energetic national woman leader, the youngest national woman leader in Nigeria, Dr. Berta Edu. You're welcome. We'd like to especially welcome the man who is the only speaker that when people are throwing plaques in the house, he's still smiling. I don't know how he does it. Honorable Demeji Bank Kolesa. I'm so sorry I had your name here. I didn't know how I omitted that. Maybe because you're smiling too much, sir. Thank you for coming. I'd like to quickly bring on stage the man who have been piloting the affairs of the PCC, His Excellency, the executive governor of Platu State and the director general Presidential Campaign Council of the APC, right Honorable Simon Bakola Lalong.
APC! The youth are not waiting. You are the ones that are going to vote. The great Nigerian youths, the greatest Nigerian youths, of the greatest Nigerian youths. Your Excellency, our candidate, the candidates of the youths, the candidates of Nigeria, the candidates of Africa, His Excellency Asiwaju Bola Ahmed. The Jagabam of Bogu are the only city boy in Nigeria. Your Excellency, the chairman and the organizer. I call him the baby of the governors, the organizer of the youths and the governor of Kogi State, His Excellency Yahya Bello. Your Excellency, the governor of Kanu State, Me Kanu. We call him Me Kanu, Me Nigeria. His Excellency, the former speaker, the honorable minister, the national youth leader. Today is your day. The woman leader. Our directors, let me not forget them, those who put up these programs, the director general, deputy director general operations and the only one who has remained very young, Oshomole. Osho Baba. The director general admin, Adisa. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, today is a town hall meeting and I will read a little of what you have, of what Asiwaju has prepared for you before you will hear from him. Again, I say, "The greatest Nigerian youths." You must answer that very well before I continue. Of the greatest Nigerian youths. Good. I welcome you to this... I welcome you to this very important and strategic town hall meeting with the incoming president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, come 2023 by the grace of God, Asiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu. Let me first thank the National Youth Coordinator for Tinubu-Shetima campaign, Governor Yahya Bello and all the PCC members that have worked hard to make this engagement possible. I also want to appreciate the national youth leader of the APC who has also been mobilizing the youth throughout the country for the success of our party. Today is your day to talk about the future of Nigeria with our incoming president, Asiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu, who has a long history of mentoring youths and harnessing their potentials towards national development. There is a saying, quote, "If you want to know the quality of a good leader, look at those following him." In this regard, there is no candidate that comes near Asiwaju in the quality and number of young people that he has groomed and mentored to become leaders in Nigeria. Asiwaju has produced young entrepreneurs, counselors, local government chairman, commissioners, governors, ministers, successful businessmen and even presidents. Asiwaju and Shetima are people that have embraced youths and empowered them for a greater future throughout their political and professional careers. That is why the Renewed Hope Agenda is full of strategies that will turn around the fortunes of the youth of Nigeria for the better. While other candidates are working hard to manipulate their youths to win elections at all costs, including using them as talks and agents of violence, Asiwaju and Shetima are carefully planning on how to give Nigerian youths jobs, security, quality education, healthcare and social security. Asiwaju has also said, "He will get to the root of the strikes in our educational institutions" and he will stop it. He will ensure that youths get access to student loans and other incentives to afford the basic needs of life. He will revive the economy and give youths the skills to be job creators and not job seekers. When Asiwaju says "Emelakon", he means it is... You know "emelakon"? He means it is his turn to free Nigerian youths from poverty and lack of focus. In essence, it is his turn to look after the Nigerian youths just as he has done as governor of Lagos and as a private citizen. I therefore want to advise Nigerian youths not to be deceived by those who have no record of relationship with the youth. Today, they are jumping up and down and they want to deceive you with lies and fake promises. Don't listen to them. Asiwaju is a practical man whose results are there for anyone to see and touch. Most importantly, Asiwaju is the only candidate whose children... Most importantly, Asuwaju is the only candidate whose children are also campaigning along with him. I saw Shay here, are you here? What, can you stand up and wave them? Please wave people. Thank you very much. This proves that he has trained his children well and taught them the value of hard work. Unlike the children of other candidates who are sleeping abroad and hoping to come back and chop later. Asuwaju's children believe in Nigeria and their patriarchy. They want to be part of the process of renewing the hope of the youths. Once again, I bring you greetings from the Chairman of the Presidential Campaign Council, our father, President Muhammadu Buhari Gcifan. He asked me to thank you for supporting him over the years and urge you to give that love and support to his successor by the grace of God, Asuwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu and Kashim Shetima. Finally, I remind you to go and collect your PVC if you have not done so. That is what you will use on February 25th to catapult Asuwaju and Shetima into the presidential villa. Asuwaju, we welcome you to the presidential villa, February. God bless Nigeria. God bless Nigerian youth. APC! Everywhere you go, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A very simple DJ, always smiling too. Thank you very much, sir. On these notes, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we're about to hear the keynote address. I didn't go to Harvard, can we have Honorable Vigo, Patrick? Can we have you quickly, sir? As we step forward, as he steps forward here, to help us bring up the man of the moment, the Baba for the youth.
When I entered this place and I saw the, I saw the paroxysm of frenzism that greeted the, I said to myself that the Nigerian youths are truly ready to defend democracy and defend their votes. So before I say one or two things to introduce Jagabang Obogu himself, I want to dedicate to the Nigerian youths and you repeat after me a popular declaration called the Mokanda Declaration. So now say after me, I will interpret to you what it means. Estatira! Esteire! Estekealo! Son los nuestros! Defendamos! That is the Mokanda Declaration, which means the air is ours and the earth and the skies, we shall defend them. I can see a determination to defend democracy, to defend continuation of democracy. What I have to say about our presidential candidate until such a time he comes to address you is to let you know that the world today is a global village. When America faced the Great Depression, the lock fell on the 32nd president of America, a man popularly called FDR, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, to lift America from the bootstraps of the Great Depression. And what did he do? He simply promulgated and implemented what he called the New Deal. When I took time to read the APC's political pronunciamiento manifesto, I said to myself, this is the new deal. That is the new deal. So the presidential candidate has provided a new deal, a compass to lift Nigeria from the bootstraps of economic quagmire and political fantasmagory. A quagmire and political fantasmagory anyway, that was orchestrated by the locusts yes and political and economic ciroco of PDP. So Nigeria is walking a progress. We welcome our presidential candidate. We have no doubt at all that with the New Deal, you will truly give Nigeria a new deal. And I want to challenge the Nigerian youths that that political manifesto is something you can lift to the status of a magna carta. I thank you, sir. I thank you all.
Thank you very much, sir. I thank you so much. I would like to quickly invite, to give us goodwill message, no other than the Director, Deputy Director General Administration for the PCC, Haja Hadiza Bala Usman. Can we welcome her with a resounding applause?
APC! Great Nigerian youth! Great Nigerian youth! This is our time. APC has shown commitment to the young generation and it is our time to use this last mile of 49 days to go to our polling unit and canvass for votes. All APC members, all PCC members, we are all going to our polling unit. But your capacity as youth is what defines our victory. So you here are the custodians, you are the owners of our success. You hold what it is that will define as victory come February 25th. So our candidate, His Excellency Asuwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu is here today to engage you, to show you that youth are the core of what defines his administration, youth are the core of what defines his campaign. And in that note, I would like to remind all of us of what we mean, of what Nigerian youth mean when it comes to campaign, of what Nigerian youth mean when it comes to winning an election. All of you know your polling units, all of you know where you have your strength, so you need to go back there and call on everyone and go door to door and knock on their doors and tell them what APC has done before in the last seven years and tell them what APC will do for them in the next four years. Speak to them about what Asuwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu has done in Lagos, the number of youths that he has changed their lives, what he has been able to do to change the trajectory of politics in Nigeria. This is the man that knows the road. This is the man that will take us to the destined location that we want our country to be. And I'll repeat again, Nigerian youth, you are the definers of what will happen to us in February 2020, February 25th. So all of us, we need to go and mobilize in our polling unit. We need to go and support what we have been saying and what we've been doing. Great Nigerian youth! Great Nigerian women! Great Nigerian APC youth! So please, all of you should come out. And I'll repeat again, APC is the party that defines success for the young generation. Some of us will know our journeys when we started politics. I joined in 2010 and I defined a lot of what it means for the political system to support a young northern woman, the political system to promote younger generation of women. We have a lot of us here that are seated, that have occupied and are occupying strategic positions irrespective of the age and irrespective of the gender. So walk the walk with us. Come on the journey, come on the APC journey and you shall be part of victory and you shall be part of success. I thank all of you for listening and I'll look forward to all of us celebrating on May 20th, on February 26th, when we all gather to celebrate the victory of APC in the presidential candidate, presidential elections. Thank you all and God bless.
Thank you very much, Haja Hadiza Bala Usman. When you look at the presidential candidate of the APC, at all time, you will see people who are very young around him, from his essays to his ADC, to his photographers, to his media aides, and I tell myself, there is hope for the Nigerian youth. This is Baba for the boys. And on that note, greatest Nigerian youth, are you here? Greatest Nigerian students, are you here? Of the greatest Baba, are you here? Of the greatest Gogo, are you here? On this note, I want to call, I want to call, those of you that didn't want me to call, I want to call, those of you over there, I want to call, over there, I want to call, the next president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Insha Allah, His Excellency, Senator Bola Ahmed Tinubu!
See! Great Nigerian youth! The intelligent Nigerian youth! The ever-confident Nigerian youths! The ever-productive Nigerian youth! The greatest of 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 the greatest! God bless you. God bless you. You've worked so hard. You deserve the celebration, the confidence. You deserve the victory. You deserve a better Nigeria. You ask for it and you will have it. You will make that decision. Your Excellency, Governor Yahya Belo, the National Youth Coordinator, my friend, my younger brother, where for education say, my son. Thank you very much. The DJ Director General of this campaign, this very confident campaign. This very sure campaign. Your Excellency, the governor of Plateau State, Governor Simon Lalou, thank you for everything, today, tomorrow and day after, we shall always be grateful. Your Excellency, I would say Jackie, that never get tired. The mobilizer that ever inspiring. The man that confidently can move the nation and the entire community to a standstill, wake up and still do our hundred years' life, ready to go at any given time, inspirational, dedicated, patriotic Nigerian governor of Kano, Alajumma Aganduj. Yes! Have many songs here. What do you say? Your Excellency, the Honorable Minister of Youth Sport and Culture, my son, Sunday Dary. The friend of mine, only yesterday, this time we were in Edo State. And now we addressing a Mamouth Rally. Succession, forward-looking, hopeful and confidence of victory. The governor of Edo State and the deputy DJ of the campaign, Comrade Adam Oshio-Male. Oshio Baba. The great Nigerian youths! You gave me a leader. And many of you have been working together. What brought me here is the hope of today. The seed of today. That many of you have shown and you sacrifice your time for. I greet this youth leader. Enes Toba is my son, is my boy, is my neighborhood boy. I'm proud of you. To all of you who have given this support. Pull yourselves together. As member of the City Boys Club. As members of Nigerian youths. As ever-ready Nigerian youths. You've inspired me. You have. Tell me. You've planted the seed today, but you've inspired tomorrow. You promised today so that we have to work hard for the inheritance of tomorrow. I thank all of you. I am extremely humbled to stand before you. So months back, I was not sure whether I would be candidate of my party or no. whether I would be candidate of my party or no. But with your nutty assurance, youth, city boy, come on. Some even name me Jackie. Let's go. Drag on. Push the load. Push forward. Yes. I'm here as you accepted candidate with very new hope to give you today, tomorrow, and day after. Then the inheritance is yours. Thank you. Mine is to teach a little bit the foundation I inherited. To build that foundation. Break our economic recovery. To immediate medium term and long time for you to inherit. We know how to do it. This is no issue or biapalotok. This is a concrete plan that we have. This is an assured hope for all of you. There is no single subsector of our population more important than you, the youths. You outnumber all of us in this nation. You are young. You are strong. You are intelligent. And your support is the key to unlocking the economic prosperity and progress of our nation. What will I define as the spirit of our youths? And most of us say, I am very proud of Nigerian youths. Why? They created a great economy out of darkness. When their uncles and your fathers see struggling wanting to come back after putting sixteen billion dollars in the dance, in the sound of darkness. They still want to come back. Sixteen billion, they couldn't generate enough kilowatts energy to make a popcorn. Jagabat, Jagabat. Thank you. Thank you. We gave them the mandate. Rigor secure. We put our lives on their palms. Rather than pay attention to rust, rather than give us electricity, rather than give us manufacturing, rather than give away off. Give us hope. Food security. The sheer the leftover of P V D F and stream themselves naked and dancing, fighting in the Ushay Market. You see why I never joined their club? And I will never need their endorsement? And I will beat them in every election? Thank you. Thank you. They wonder why I surrounded myself with the youths. They've forgotten the age of Diemji Bankoli as the Speaker of the National Assembly. They had forgotten who developed Temi Bajabia Miller as the Speaker of a promising Nigeria. They've forgotten that a sold-out fascular incomplete the bridge. They sold the sword. They turned the sword to ice. Their president then, Baba, abused the horrible. But we complete the east-west road. We complete the bridge. We didn't say it's a leftover. We didn't do what they would have done without party money. Aluminium smelter in Ikoti Abasi. They sold for one hundred and twenty million. And they paid one hundred and twenty million for dredging of the river. Yet, we don't have an aluminium production in Nigeria. And they want to come back. I said, no. You said, no.
Jagabat, Jagabat. Jagabat, Jagabat. Jagabat, Jagabat. Jagabat, Jagabat. Jagabat, Jagabat.
Please. I beg you. Teach them how to spell out common sense economy. How to find a road where there is no way. How to bring hope out of darkness of hopelessness. God forbid. We are not going to bring them back. We are not going to allow them to come back. We are not going to be violent. We are going to use our PVC. We are going to vote our mind. We are going to vote our values. We are going to vote our expectation. We are going to vote our today and assured tomorrow. My pledge to you. The time is now. I am offering my soul for the skills, my expertise, my passion, my track record to bring in to you a better tomorrow. Tomorrow that we have manufactured goods for other nations to buy. Tomorrow that we utilize our gas and of God given resources to sell to Europe. You just know why I'm picking. My running mates, Kazim Shetima and I are giving you an assurance of a renewed hope. We will not abuse each other in Ushay Market like Roba Sanjo or Natiku. I didn't want to mention their name before. Guys. I can't help it. They wrote letters after we closed all the postal offices in Nigeria. Great Nigerian youths. Great Nigerian youths. The promising Nigerian youths. My promises to the nation and the role of you. I will seek as we seek to become a nation of creators and not just consumers. Your role is very key. I promise that you will play a vital role steering the wheel of my administration. You will have innovations. You will have enough electricity to power your home and investment. You will have good roads. We will commandeer the AK-47 put it away from the unemployed and teach them easily how to operate caterpillars, hoeing and sowing the seed that provide the food security for this country. I promise security agencies. They will have what they need. If it is personnel, we have able-bodied boys. If it is human capital, we have a know. If it is technology, we will give them the technology. They will crack down the bandits and send them away from the face of the heart of Nigeria. The great Nigerian youths. As I said in the radio yesterday. Don't say Yahoo, boys, anymore. It's bye-bye Yahoo. Welcome, technology. Lady fiber hub, fiber optic, that will create all spots where people can read. Eliminate a battery system. No more abandoned projects. Our forefathers' promise in today that good. We are not giving up. I'm old enough to remember their stories. Today, I made a promise that we will drive tomorrow's economy and have a better Nigeria. I'm back. For eight months, strife, accumulated debts. Agreement with the university teachers, no more. There's a solution around the corner. Four years program is four years. There will be student loan. If you cannot finance yourself, we give you a loan. You complete the education when you get the work. Only when you start working and with the capacity to pay, then you start to pay. Okay. You go there. All of you brilliant people. You go there. Instead of selling away our refineries, we will build additional ones. I tell you, Drew, in my heart, you will get alternative. The social welfare program we continue, we define, promoted, are the fundamentals. We get enough to go their daily life. Our pension program, we pick our economy. We create financial instrument that will promote Nigerian long-term recovery. We will use technology. Not any excuses about oil theft, gas waste, gas flaring, poisoning water, no more. Elect Tinubu, elect me. You promise?
We promise!
You promise?
We promise!
You promise?
We promise!
I can go home to sleep.
Yes!
God bless you.
Amen!
God bless Nigeria. God bless our youths. You will smile. You will be happy today, tomorrow and day after. God bless our Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Can we all be seated? That was just a keynote address to kick-start the day. We have not started. Can we all be seated? Can we all be seated, please? Please, can we have a clear thoroughfare? Can we have a clear thoroughfare? Thank you on this note, ladies and gentlemen. We will be taking just three goodwill messages. We will be taking just three goodwill messages while we have our panels to sit down and explain to the youth the thematic of the Renewed Hope Manifesto for the youth. I'd like to specially recognize the first national youth leader of our party, Barista Ismail, who is still going to talk to us, Alahaji Sanusi Ohiare, Idi Ralifikation and Sahijo, all of you. Youth, please, can we take our seats? Members of protocol and event, I recognize you especially. Well done. Thank you for always putting the programs together. Would like to please invite for goodwill message. Can we all be seated, please? Can we all be seated? We are going to have a meet and greet session. Governor Yaya Bello have assured us that we are all going to have a meet and greet session with the presidential candidate. Thank you for the love. In the meantime, ladies and gentlemen, I want to call on someone who is piloting the youth affair of the Nigerian country. Excuse me, please, can we have a clear thoroughfare? Thank you. Baba, I know it's all love, but would like to quickly call on somebody who will come up here and give us just two minutes goodwill. Everyone who come here to please stand on the already established protocol and just give the goodwill message, two minutes, and there we go. Greatest Nigerian youth, greatest Nigerian youth, are you ready? Are you conscious? All right, I'd like to invite to give this goodwill message the Honorable Minister of Youth and Sports, Your Excellency Sunday Dari, to come forward in two minutes and speak to his constituents. Thank you.
Build the youth. When I say build, you say build the nation. Build the youth. Build the youth. Great, great, great Nigerian youth. You have just heard from the Oracle himself. There's nothing more I can add to what the Oracle has said. But let me say this evening, Your Excellencies here present, most especially the APC presidential candidate, my political godfather, without any doubt, the incoming president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu, and other excellences here present. I have just two minutes. You have heard from our candidate, presidential candidate himself. In the Renewed Hope Manifesto, his plans for the youth are very clear. They are not fuzzy, they are unambiguous. They are plans that are realizable. And when you look at the litany of youth, over forty-five of us, that has helped to grow in our career in the past two and a half decades, most of us were found when we were twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I am a testimony to Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed's tenacity to find young people, grow them and lead them to prosperity. This is the man for the youth. Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu is the man for the youth, the father of the youth, the partner of the youth, the friend of the youth, a very savvy father who in Lagos State brought technology for the first time ever to plug the tax holes in the economy of Lagos State. He used technology almost two decades ago. This is a man given to technology and he will bring that to pass. So I say today to Nigerian youths, you have just one choice, one vote, one choice. Cast your vote without any doubt for Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu. And then we can say the time for our youth have come. They will become creators of wealth, employers of labor, contributors to the GDP of our country. I thank you so much and I say, great Nigerian youths, this is your time. You are the CEOs of tomorrow. And this man, the presidential candidate, the CEO of the politics of this country, the generalissimo of our politics will turn you youths to strong entrepreneurs and CEOs of your future. Thank you so much and good evening.
Thank you so much, the Honorable Minister, who took us to the Olympics to get so many gold and you know, the record-breaking and also happened during his time. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a lady who is talented, who is going to come and speak to us very soon. But before then, in two minutes, we want to see the very beautiful, energetic, with loud voice, the youngest woman leader in Nigeria, the APC National Woman Leader, Dr. Betah Edu. Two minutes, two minutes.
Of the greatest Nigerian students, a very conscious Nigerian student, of the greatest Nigerian youth, I want to say, Nigerian youths, I want to hear. I want to inform. I want to educate. I want to conscientize of the greatest, Baba. Are you ready to hear? Nigerian youths, are you ready to hear? I greet the incoming president, whether they like it, we're not interested anymore. I greet the incoming president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria by the grace of Almighty God, Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu. I also want to hail a very young, dynamic governor, the performing governor, Yaya Bello. Thank you for putting together this wonderful event. I greet the grand mobilizer, the super mobilizer, the northern engine of Nigeria, no other than Governor Ganduji. We greet you. I want to specially greet the DG of this campaign, one who has led the best campaign in Nigeria. I greet the governor of Plateau State, Governor Alon. And indeed, our minister, Agar Oshomela, we greet you. Bright Nigerian women! Bright Nigerian women, no woman! We will do this speech together. Are we together? We will do this speech together because it is our time, it's youth o'clock. It is what? It is what? So when I say security, you answer Tinubu. Are we together? Are we ready? Nigerian youths, are you ready? Security, good health, security, job for Nigerian youths, thirty-five percent, positions in the center, financial empowerment, strength for the youth, superior governance. I didn't hear you. Who did you say? Let the villa hear you all. Thank you very much. Nigerian youths, this is your time. Nigerian women, this is your time. Don't negotiate your vote. They came to social media, we crush them. They bring propaganda in no work. We have a celebable quality, surprise experience. Agar for the boys, Agar for the women. Agar West Sabe and the one who will change the political space in Nigeria. Don't be deceived. Go door to door, go house to house. Let them get their PVC and go and vote for Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu. And by the grace of Almighty God, by the twenty-fifth of February, this time, five o'clock, I've been at five thirty, I've been at six o'clock, we will be dancing our way into where? Into where? They didn't hear you, into where? Thank you very much, Nigerian youths. God bless you. We love you all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Betah Edu. I'm not sure I can keep up with that voice. Thank you, the very energetic woman leader. At this point, away from speeches, we need to bring in someone who will inspire us, a very talented individual, Kadija Sulaiman Aliu, to come give us in two minutes spoken words. Can we encourage her? Kadija Sulaiman Aliu.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, all protocols observed. I'm Kadija Sulaiman Aliu and the title of my poem is "Hope is Here", and it goes like this. I promise you this, Nigeria will be great. Nigeria will rise. Nigeria will again be a land of hope. Let our nation be the dream it is destined to be. Let it be that great, strong land of love, peace and unity, where we have full security, where we have abundant food to eat. Oh, let my country be a land where we have power to light our lives, where employment opportunities are provided, a land where life is free and equality is in the air we breathe. I am a poor Nigerian pushed apart, bearing scars driven from my land. I am a young Nigerian, full of strength and hope but tangled. I am a farmer, waiting for the crops to grow so I can harvest, though I'm scared of the farm because I don't want to be short, but my family need food. I am a man who left my home in search of a new place, which is meant to be my new home, to build a homeland for the free. Who can take us out of all the challenges now? Who can reach out to us? The road to a better Nigeria lies before us. Together, let us walk it. Together, let us renew hope. Yes, all our dreams can be possible. We can achieve all our dreams, but only if we make the right choice, if we vote the right man. And there is only one man that can bring all our dreams to life. He is the only candidate who can renew Nigeria from its current state towards its best and brightest future. He will tackle the unfinished business of fixing our country. He has done it before and he will do it again. He has proven from his previous achievements in the private and public sector to be credible, tested and worthy to be trusted again. To be trusted again, to return peace within our communities, to safeguard our forests, secure our borders, to fight terrorism, banditry and corruption, to reduce inefficiency and waste in government, to generate and distribute electricity, quality education and healthcare to all, to empower precious youth and resolute women empowerment. This is a promise that only one man can fulfill. That man is Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu. Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu means renew hope. His candidacy is not just politics as usual. It means hope is here, security is here, prosperity is here, tolerance is here, unity is here. Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu is a leader that will hold the country and its people together, a silent achiever, a quiet performer, a man for our time, a leader worthy of our trust. But he can't do it alone, only with your support. Support Ashiwaju and make Nigeria great. Vote Ashiwaju Bola Ahmed Tinubu, vote APC. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. She reminds us of the Bukhari Twins, Hamida and Faisal Bukhari. We call them Bukhari because their surname is Busari. She looks so much like them. We have our national youth leader, who is the host of the youth here. So he speaks last as the host because it's the high point of the event and that's the moment we all should clamor for. If I call up the national youth leader when he speaks after listening to our candidate and Governor Yabalo, everywhere we go, of the greatest youth, I am not bringing my national youth leader yet because he's not even ready to come up yet. So, before I bring up my national youth leader, thank you very much. Before I do that, the governor that commands some set of youth and he has shown capacity... Before I do that, the governor that commands some set of youth, and he has shown capacity when we went to Kano State, the 70% of the people we had there are not just youth, but youths with their PVCs. And he is the governor that have been doing PVC sensitization door to door, and he has the number. He champions one of the KKK states. Your Excellency, I am counting on you without any doubt. There are going to be hearing millions, millions, millions from Kano State, ladies and gentlemen, His Excellency, Dr. Umar Ganduji, for his goodwill. Two minutes.
Allohuakumullahi, wajah, tanir regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, rabbil ala ali. The great Nigerian youth. Can you hear me? Can you see me? Your Excellency, our incoming president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, come 2023, Insha Allah, the prototype of Nigerian youth and the governor of Kogi State, Governor Yahya, the Director General of the Presidential Campaign Council, your excellencies, governors who are here with us, the former speaker, members of National Assembly who are here, all the dignitaries, and most important, the youth and women who are here in this great hall. All of you, peace be upon you all. In fact, I am fascinated with this huge crowd. You know, my vision has been infected with human images, with demographic images. I become nostalgic when I see this crowd. I thought I'm in Kano, so I'm highly impressed. When we talk of youth, we are talking of younger age. When we talk of youth, we are talking of strength. When we talk of youth, we are talking of stamina. We are talking of exuberance. We are talking of energy. And in fact, when you want to move a mountain and you cannot move a mountain, please invite the youth, they will move a mountain. When you want to see it rolling, you cannot push it rolling, you invite the youth, you can see how they can push it rolling. Ladies and gentlemen, our great youth, today is your day. We have listened to various speeches, inspiring speeches, and we are committed for this coming election. My advice for the youth, we say politics is a game of number. Politics is a game of number, but beyond that, politics is a game of regulation, is a game of procedure, is a game of legality. Youth who are mentally alert, the campaign is almost over as far as we are concerned. What remains now is the strategy for election. The strategy for election depends on youth. We rely on youth for the mobilization, for public enlightenment. We rely on youth for people to collect their PVCs, and during election day, we rely on youth to mobilize the population to head for the election units. We also advise you, be conscious of procedure, be conscious of legality, otherwise, your population can be ravished by legality. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for coming, our youth, we salute you all. Thank you and God bless. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. We are going to hear from you on the 25th of February 2022, 2023, I beg your pardon. Okay, your excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be inviting the national leader, but not yet, because he's going to be ushered here by his soldiers, his lieutenants, those of them who have been doing so much around the 36 states and the FCT. But before I do that, he has asked me to appreciate all the youth groups we have here today, the National Association of Nigerian Students, the National Youth Council of Nigeria, the Nigerian Youth Parliament, Team Ramatu Youth, Arrewa Youth Movement, Ohanes Endibo Youth Movement, APC Professional Women Council, Odua Youth Movement. You are all welcome. The national youth leader is going to speak on your behalf. But before he make his way here, I'd like to call on some people to sit down, those who will be talking to the youth after the national youth leader. I'd like to invite Anthony Edogbo. I'd like to invite barrister Zainab Bouba Maroua. I'd like to call Tawke Faswa, Abdullahi Oharuna, and Abdoumen Aboubakar. These people are going to dissect the renewed hope manifesto for us. But to usher us in into the panel section, this session is going to be moderated by a woman who is talented, a sister in whom I am very proud, a woman, an orator, and a youth like myself, Kemi Kemkem. Please take your seat. On this note, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, with a very loud ovation, I invite to the podium, the national youth leader of the All Progressive Congress, Mr. Dayo Israel, and all the deputy national youth leaders, and assistant national leaders, zonal national leaders, as well as the state coordinators for the youth. You're welcome. Can we have Shewun Bossede of Sanye join them? Please, can we have the deputies next to him first? And then we have the zona, so much love, the entire hall is coming up. Please, can we, can we, can we just keep it? Okay, I bow.
Greatest of the greatest Nigerian youth. Greatest progressive youth. On your mandate, we shall start. Bola.
On your mandate, we shall start.
Bola. On your mandate, bola. On your mandate, bola.
On your mandate, we shall start.
We shall start. Bola.
On your mandate, we shall start.
Bola.
On your mandate.
Bola.
On your mandate.
Bola.
On your mandate, we shall start.
Your Excellency, the next president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, my father, the Asiwadju of Lagos, the Jagavan of Africa, His Excellency, two-time governor, former senator, and incoming president, Bola Ahmed Tinubu. Please give him a big round of applause. Your Excellency, the national youth coordinator of the PCC, His Excellency, Governor Yahya Hadozabelo, Your Excellency, the DG of the campaign, Governor Simon La Long, Your Excellency, the governor of Kano, other excellencies here present, my sister, the national woman leader, my brother, the deputy national youth leader, all my zonal youth leaders, my state youth leaders, all the support groups here, I greet all of you. I want to tell you a short story before I sit down. I'm here representing the mandate of over 200,000 elected youth leaders of my great party, from my deputy to the 36, to the six zonal youth leaders, to the 36 plus FCT 37, state youth leaders, 37 deputy state youth leaders, all our 774 local government youth leaders, over 300 LCDU leaders, 8,864 ward unit leaders, and 176,000 polling unit leaders of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. And we have come here to publicly declare our unalloyed commitment to go into our state, our local government, our ward, and our street, and our polling unit as Jagavan's army to declare and work for the victory of Asiwadju on February 50, 25, 2023. Are we going to deliver? How, how are we going to deliver? Your Excellency, I want to say a story. There was a city that was in darkness. The city was in eternal darkness, and people were wanting what was the solution. Then one day, some people were talking about it, while they were walking, they passed by the sun, and they said, "Oh, son, have you seen the city without light?" And they said, "No, I'm not aware of that city without light. Can I go and see that city?" So, the two people took the sun on a visit to the city without light. When they got to that city without light, with the sun, there was so much light everywhere, the sun was asking them, "But you say there is no dark, there's no light in this place. Where is the darkness?" They say, "Son, you cannot see darkness because you come with the light, and everywhere you go, darkness disappear." Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, Asiwadju Bola Ahmed Tinubu is the light, is the sun. Let, listen to me and listen good. Every city that he enters into, it is like a midnight torch, darkness disappear. You don't believe me? Go to Lagos. We have the blue line, we have the red line, we are expecting the green line, we have the lucky free trade zone, we have the ports in Lagos, we have Sunfield Atlantic City in Lagos, because when Asiwadju entered the darkness of Lagos, darkness disappear. Guys, listen to me, I'm going somewhere. Asiwadju is like what the Yoruba call Edujobi. The Yoruba calls the twins Edujobi. They say, "Wini, wini, loju, ano duwe, ediwele, loju, yeye." In other words, he looks small in the eyes of the elders, in the eyes of the letter writer, he's like nobody. But in the eyes of those of us that appreciate him, he's a giant. Somebody said giant. Oh, you didn't say, say giant. They say, "Oh, Wali Alaki sah, oh, son, dalasho." Asiwadju is the man that meets a naked man and cloths that nakedness. Asiwadju is one that meets an angry man and makes him a well-behaved man. Let me tell you one more story before I drop the mic. Sometime ago in Lagos, two men wanted to become chairman in Chobodo Local Government. They came to Asiwadju in Lagos. They were brought by a man called Bolanwabago Stowe. He was one of Asiwadju's tailor. He was in Shomolu as a tailor, a fashion designer, but he was educated. Nigeria appealed to him, but he was a tailor. They were fighting to be chairman. Asiwadju said, "Go and decide among yourself who is going to step down for who." They went in and came out, but nobody was willing to step down. And Asiwadju looked at that tailor that brought them and said, "Shewo no leje chairman ni. Can you not become the chairman too?" Suddenly, that guy became the chairman of that local government. Bolanwabago Stowe, a tailor, served two times, and brought development to Bariga Local Government in Chobodo, Lagos. Asiwadju is a man that sees emerging talent and birth creativity. Asiwadju saw me, a child of a single mother, and gave me a scholarship to study law at London Metropolitan University. If you give Asiwadju chance to bring his sunlight into Nigeria, you will see greatness, you will see prosperity, you will see change, you will see science and wonder, you will see transformation. Thank you. We are here because of Asiwadju Bola Ahmed Tinubu, and that is why myself and my zonal youth leaders, my deputy and my statehood leaders, we have come together to initiate Deliver Your Street Day. We are going to be working with His Excellency, Dr. Yahya Hadozabelo, my brother from the City Boy Movement, to ensure that the Saturday, and my brother, Shayeti Tinubu, and everybody in City Boy Movement, we're going to work together to ensure that Saturday, 21st of January, in every state and every street in Nigeria, we are going to organize our Deliver Your Street program. Everybody will talk to their neighbors, they are going to talk to their partners. On the 4th of February, we will deliver our street. The 10th of February, we'll have our Deliver Your Street Day, so that on the 25th of February, we will deliver Nigeria to Asiwadju and Asiwadju to Nigeria. On your mandate, we shall start. Bola.
On your mandate, we shall start. On your mandate, on your mandate, bola. On your mandate, we shall start.
On your mandate, we shall start. Akobi, on your mandate. Akobi. Bola. Bola. Thank you and God bless you. God bless Nigeria.
Thank you, you are a leader. Please, the youth leader. Thank you. The youth leader is going back to insist with his lateness. Please, can you all take your seats? Can you all take your seats? Thank you so much. What a solidarity match for Bola Ahmed Tinubu. Thank you, that was the national youth leader. I saw Mrs. Uju dancing seriously to On Your Mandate. You wish you can come back to my generation again. Thank you, please, as we all take our seats. Can we all take our seats? Kemkem, you have to, your excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I've been informed by the Thank you.
There you go. Hello, 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 hello.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Please. One, two.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening.
Thank you. Akon. Our mic is out and it's been worked on. So, so, we are going to have, we will need, we will need to have just one minute before the national anthem. Before we take the national anthem, we need Kemkem to please let us know that there is going to be a video of the dissection of the manifesto of Bola Ahmed Tinubu that will be done by this set of experts I have on the panel. So they are just going to use one minute each to introduce themselves and tell you what they'll be talking about. And the person to introduce them is Kemi. So you do the introduction and and then tell us what they'll be talking about. We take the national anthem and then we continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, MC Expensive. You can see how expensive she looks. A very good evening to you, everyone. My name is Asheku, but my loved ones call me Kemkem. The mic is seasoned, but I'm so excited to be here this evening to moderate this panel of young people who believe in Ashiwaju. Some of us know that Ashiwaju becoming president of Nigeria is a gift to Nigeria in itself. And so we will go a limb. We will go above and beyond to ensure that he becomes the next president of this amazing country so that we can stand outside in the Committee of Nations and say, "I am proudly Nigerian." This is the man who's done it before. He has the capacity to do it again and again and again. One of the things I love to say is that he termed the Atlantic Ocean. Who has termed Mami Water before? Have you termed Mami Water before? Ashiwaju termed Mami Water. This is the man who can do it for Nigeria. And so, so that I don't waste too much time, um, the panelists are seated. They are young people who believe in Nigeria like myself. And we kick off with the ladies in the house. We have seated Barista Zeynab Bubamarua. Ladies and gentlemen, we have seated Barista Zeynab Bubamarua. Put your hands together. She is the Special Assistant to the Honorable Minister of the FCT on Community Relations. She's a politician. She's also a Harvard-trained strategist, been at the bar for 19 years, Assistant National Spokesperson Youth Directorate, APC Presidential Campaign Council. We also have seated a powerful mobilizer, powerful mobilizer, a woman who can be, you know, said to be a lion, not a lioness. There's a difference between the two. Her name is Shewu Bosede Osamaye. PhD in the making. She is a politician, a grassroots mobilizer, senior legislative aide on gender equality to the Honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives and the interim national president of Progressive Young Women's Forum. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Honorable Bosede Shewu Osamaye, one of the panelists. Thank you. Now to the men. You know, we women, you know, they don't give us enough hype. So we have to help ourselves, you know? The first man I will be introducing is a very young man. His name is Doctor in the Making, like we have presidents in waiting, you know? Doctor in Making, Anthony Edogbo. Anthony Edogbo is a 500-level medical student of the Eboni State University at Bakaleki. He is a foremost youth activist and mobilizer. And he was formerly a member of the Children's Parliament between 2006 and 2010. There he is sitting, doctor and politician, mobilizer. Please put your hands together. Thank you. We also have seated, sorry. We also have seated Abdullahi Oharuna, known as Haru Spice, a yearly fellow, that's the President Obama Initiative for training young people. He is a Fellow of the Young African Leaders Initiative and Associate Member Nigerian Institute of Public Relations. Of course, a journalist like myself and a public relations expert, a writer, a poet, a youth actor. Please put your hands together for Haru Spice, Haru Spice. Very spicy. Are you ginger or pepper? All right, and next up, we have Abdul Salam Abdulmoumin. Abdul Salam Abdulmoumin is a senior legislative aide and expert in climate change and disaster management. You remember when Baba was talking about climate change? How they should not come and call a monkey a dog for us? Those who are Yoruba understand what I'm trying to say. Don't call a monkey a dog for us. We know our problems. We will find how to solve it. And last but not the least, because this is a chartered accountant. He is also an economist. And combining the two, ha! He also holds a PhD in public policy, a doctorate. Doctor Tote Fasua is one person that when he speaks, economists across the world listen. They shake. They want to know which way to go. Put your hands together. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to make this a very fast one. We're going to make this a very fast, um, um, panel because we understand that Baba is the most hard-working candidate. But I don't like to call him a candidate because he's actually a president in waiting. Who, who, who wants to? Anyways, let's move on. So, ladies and gentlemen, we will be discussing, you know, how setting the youth agenda economically, entertainment, youth inclusion, political inclusion, and all of that. And so, I'm going to kick off with... Okay, um, MC Expensive is whispering something in my ears. And I understand that Baba wants to do something. Baba, do something. Baba, do something. All right. Please, ladies and gentlemen, do bear with me. Ashiwaju wants to say something.
Governor Yaya Mello is going to make a presentation to His Excellency. He just wants to show His Excellency what some movement have done.
Thank you very much. There is this particular compilation that has been made by the Honorable Minister of Youth and Sport. Honorable Sunday Diary, Bola Ahmed Tinubu, A Life of Service. A Better Era Is Possible. You just, all you need to know about Bola Ahmed Tinubu in just 100 pages. This is a hard copy. We are going to circulate it and we are going to make the soft copy available online in all platforms. So that those that does not know who Bola Ahmed Tinubu is, you will get to know him just in 100 pages. Thank you. I appreciate you, Honorable Minister.
Thank you. Uh, panelists, can you have your panel photo session with His Excellency? Because we are going to take the national anthem now. Panelists, please go down and take your session. Why will all rise to take the national anthem of the Federal Republic of Nigeria? Why, Umar Faruk, you come and give us the Aluta anthem. Greater Nigerian students, are you ready for the Aluta anthem?
Honor the greatest Nigerian students. Honor the greatest bossa. I want to shout. I want to yell. I want to magana. I want to shara. I want to shh. Aluta kontinua. Aluta, aluta kontinua. Aluta, aluta goza. Alu, goza. Aluta kontinua. Victoria, Victoria, asada. Victoria, Victoria, asada. Victoria, Victoria, bossa. Victoria, bossa. Victoria, asada. Education, education must be free. Education, education must be free. Education, education, bossa. Education, bossa. Education must be free. Nigeria, Nigeria must be won. Nigeria, Nigeria must be won. Nigeria, Nigeria, bossa. Nigeria, bossa. Nigeria. Three fundamental American goals of our becoming president.
Bossa, bossa. Shall we say? Arise, so come. Thank you very much.